And I don't know, I don't know what percentage of the people we get going there. I would think it's not a high percentage, but yeah. If we made an extra copy and posted it there, it can't hurt. But I think these are the official sites that we're supposed to do illegally. Like I said, you know, no one's going to those buildings unless they want to go specifically to look.
You know, though, posting them on the exterior of those buildings, you know, there's free parking in front of that. All in the common at the library. Anyone who's interested in stopping by and taking a peek. It, uh, it seems just as convenient for someone to stop by and take a look at, at, at the warrant posted on the outside of the Henrywood's building. That doesn't seem like an outrageous ask for someone who's interested in the happenings of the town government to uh, maybe have a little bit of intentionality of, uh, around, uh, check, checking out the warrant, you know? Rather than just being at the library and happening to notice at the top out of the corner of your eye.
And it will be presented Thursday. And, you know, in full with, with the budget and, um, at the meeting, you know, it'll be zoned for everybody, but best we can do with what we have right now, I think it legally makes us compliant. So we need to follow through with it and maybe we suggest we can print a couple of copies and make sure there's one on the outside of the, of the Henrywood's building as well as in the basement. And the other buildings, I'm sure they can all be affixed facing outward.
Okay.
But yeah, and then I see our, the article we asked for. It's phrased the way we wanted and written in for the, um, cable access. And, you know, put it out there and we see what the town thinks. The town wants it, they'll approve it. If they don't, they won't. All we can do is present it and give people the option. If they don't feel the way we do about it, then they'll shoot it down. And if the town does support it and they want people to have internet, then they're going to pass it. It's not our money, it's theirs. Um, it's something we've worked on and we've had support working on. So, you know, I think it's the right thing to put it out there.
Okay.
All right, I'm satisfied with the warrant. If you guys are also, we can look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the warrant as submitted, um, today for the June 30th, 2020 annual town meeting.
With the rain date?
Rain date of July 1st, 2020.
Excellent.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, I'll call for any further discussion, one last chance. And I'll call for a vote, all those in favor.
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes, the motion will carry unanimous. The only other thing we planned, I believe, to discuss this evening was, um, the administrator, interim and the committee. Heather suggested we might consider, um, Evan Kelly is reaching out to him as we did to Todd. Um, with, with the interim advertised, um, Evan would be eligible.
Is it publicly posted yet?
Uh, it will be, but you're already, he's already eligible because we already changed the modifications of the regular position.
He's already eligible because of what?
We already posted the full-time position. So once we changed the modifications to that, he would be eligible for the interim.
Um.
He was already eligible because it was the advertisement that was the problem and the interim wasn't, doesn't need to be advertised.
Because we advertised for the full-time position again, Matt, last week with the modified, uh,
Prior to the advertisement, he was still eligible for the interim because the job description is still allowed for the variation in education versus work experience. It was the advertisement that prevented him, but the advertisement was for the full-time position, not the interim.
Correct.
Yes, but the advertisement as we just reposted for the full-time position is now advertising saying, welcome, come on in, you're eligible. So if we pulled from that pool, someone who is eligible, including him, him, then he would be eligible for the interim. I'll post the interim today and then you can interview if you'd like him next week.
I, I think I want the, I want the interim posted first because we're still talking about, council told us.
It's already posted.
People that were, the interim's not.
No, the prior one has already been posted.
I know, the people that were eligible from our first posting, we could use. Um, the, the new posting is for the full-time, not the interim. The interim posting will go out soon. And I think we should wait till the interim posting is out because then he's eligible for that. We haven't reviewed and done our process on any of the new candidates under the new full-time posting yet. So I'm skeptical and hesitant to just assume we can, you know, pull him into the pool and invite him when we haven't done anything with that pool yet. But as soon as the interim is advertised, then absolutely, I'd say he's eligible, we call him in for an interview. So let's get the cart before the horse, horse and post it, then invite him for an interview.
My one concern about the idea of using any of the full-time applicants as a potential interim is I do feel like you're giving that individual um, a benefit over the other applicants. It's a little different in Heather's case because we weren't ready to advertise for the full-time position when we made the decision for the interim. But in this case, we've already twice advertised for the full-time position. And then if we take one of them out and say, you can be the interim, they're going to have a kind of a head start on how this town operates over the other applicants and you're almost giving them a, a favoritism without even knowing them any more than you do any of the other.
That's assuming he does a good job. If he does a poor job, then it's his detriment because we see, whoa, yeah, he's not cut out for this. So there's pro and con to that on either side and of the original applicants. Um, we discussed, I, I think, um, it's the next logical choice because I think he's also available. He's not out of state, he's not sitting in another job right now to compete. So, you know, since we already have read his resume and, and, you know, if, if he wants to apply interim, much like if, if Todd would have, it's kind of no, the better idea what we might be getting than, than you know, pooling and, and not knowing what comes in. But it's just a consider, once the advertisement is out, we could have 10 people apply and we may like someone else, we don't know yet.
Understood, I just.
I understand, I understand, I understand the reservation with Matt, it could go either way.
I see your point.
It could work against him as well as for him. Dylan?
Uh, yeah, I would like to talk to him as soon as possible. Seeing as how it's June 19th. Um, if the new advertisement will be posted today, is there anything stopping us from interviewing him as, as soon as possible next week? All we need to do is, uh, have a meeting with seven to two hour notice, right?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, right.
Minus weekends and holidays. So we could post a meeting on Wednesday, today. Otherwise we'd have to post on Thursday if we waited till Monday.
Let's post a meeting to interview him. Do we need?
Rather have a day or two of it being posted, actually see if anybody else applies before we jump in. But if you would like to, we can go through that process. I got a.
All right, just, just keep in mind, my last day is no later than June 30th. So at some point, we're going to run out of all ability to transition anything.
Yep.
Understood. So the interim position is not advertised yet, why?
I probably just didn't hit the send button. It's all ready to go. I've just been swamped with trying to get the warrant done and the budget finished for last night and the other documents that need to get out.
Okay, so.
Only so many hours in a day, Greg. I, I can go post it right now, it's ready to go.
Okay, if we post it now, then certainly by, you know, Wednesday, we may have some people that we would like to talk to and we can move forward at the time of the matter, correct?
Okay. That wasn't an attack, Heather, it was just trying to figure out if there was a process in place that made it hard for you to do that versus just, we've asked a lot of you. At least from me, I don't think Greg was trying to attack you.
No, I just didn't know why it wasn't.
A three-day wait or a posting period that prevented this from happening, or is it just, there's a lot going on?
So we understand it's, it's of time concerns, so let's get it posted and then we'll, as soon as we can, um, interview, we'll, we'll start calling people when we have, um, resumes in and, and see how many we can get to interview next week.
Um, I do have time available Wednesday or Thursday night, but I wouldn't be able to meet prior to six. Better six thirty, six is very difficult.
So let's shoot for six thirty Wednesday night and try to bring in, you know, at least this one, and if anyone else, um, you know, we'll have to grab resumes and, and look. I mean, if you guys want to get them, somebody wants to just take the resumes that come in or the people that apply for it and give Heather an okay to line up an interview so we don't have to have a meeting, we can authorize one of us to agree to meet, you know, up to three people if they were at least a second person if we get the applications.
Can you, can you say what you're, what you're recommending again, Greg? Can you say that again?
Right, um, Matt's concern was that if we're going to advertise, we may as well see what comes in. So if we can agree amongst us that one of us three will by, you know, Monday or Tuesday, you know, see what comes in Tuesday, maybe. And decide if there's anybody else we want to call to come in for a meeting on Wednesday and, and bring in another interview. We could say, you know, interview possible candidates on Wednesday and leave it open, not list by name. And then we'd have the chance with, without us meeting with one of us just saying, yeah, call this guy in too.
Yeah, I would, I, I would love to go through, I would love to go through any, uh, any submissions that we have on Monday.
What I would suggest is for Wednesday night, we set up no more than three interviews. And we start with the first three that come in the door, one of those being the one we've already mentioned, Evan. So the next two to come in the door would be the three that we would do Wednesday night. And if more come in Wednesday night, we can discuss setting up another interview for the remaining if we feel like it's worth it.
Fair enough, we did say first come, first served, we talked about this, so we'll just do that.
Would that include any of that, uh, we might want to strike from the list, from, uh, the list of considered applicants? Or do, are you, are you recommending that we go with literally the, the two that, uh, apply? The first two that apply?
The first two.
The first two that apply for interim?
Yes.
On top of the one we want to call?
Yep.
Okay, had that, that sound good? You understand what we're asking there?
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead and advertise and we'll want to call Evan and, and the first two that come in and try to see him Wednesday night at six thirty.
Okay.
And we'll schedule a meeting for Wednesday night, six thirty to interview possible candidates for interim administrator. With a possible.
Okay, planning. Okay, forty-five minutes each, each candidate? With a five-minute break in between?
I don't think that long, I think we try to keep that shorter. Aren't you guys, maybe thirty minutes? Try to do this in an hour and a half, two hours total.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, due to the situation, I do think a thirty-minute, five-minute break. That way you can schedule, so know when they can show rather than stick around. Um, we're still kind of doing Zoom meetings, so I think it's a little bit more important to, well, sitting on a Zoom meeting is like sitting outside in the hallway anyway, so it's no different. So I, I don't know if we need a, a full forty-five minutes for each one in this case.
And I just note that possible vote to be taken after, so we can go right there if we want.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Last thing, gentlemen, is going to be the search committee and no search committee for the, um, full-time position. I, I still would rather go through them ourselves to, I think it cuts two weeks off the process, that's all, that's for that reason alone.
I guess. Personally, I, Greg, I can't, and I feel, I'm pretty satisfied with the work that the search committee did on the first group. Um, I would like them to be able to continue with this so they can include their previous, uh, knowledge of all the other applicants and add it to the new, um, and go through that process. So for me, I still support using the search committee to go through the, uh, any new applicants that came through and then resubmit a finalist list for us.
The only thing I'll add to that before I ask Dylan is that we fully expected to see Todd Miller and, and Heather Monroe in this finalist list and they weren't. And they had two more open slots they could have given us and they were not included. And those are two candidates we both, we all three very much considered qualified and wanted to see. So bearing that in mind, I kind of rather just pick to the last ones myself at this point. But that statement, I'll let Dylan have a minute and then Matt will get back to you.
Um, yeah, I was, uh, a, a little, uh, surprised and uh, dis- disappointed to see Heather not on the top of the pile, to be quite honest, as I've said before. Um, I'm, I'm worried about the, the search committee and, and, and just that. Uh, I think the speed that we work now is, is, is pretty critical. I mean, it's, uh, June 19th now and uh, I, I would like to see the search committee, I want to hear their voices. I, I think that it would be good if they could review some of our applicants. I just, I just worry that the timeline will drag. If they can come up with a schedule or if we could come up with a schedule together wherein, you know, we can review, they can review. And, you know, we can get this, get this moving at a, at a good clip. That's, that would be more where I would land on, on this.
Matt, back to you for follow-up if you'd like.
Well, I didn't go into it with any expectation of who would be a finalist and that's specifically because I had no clue who would be coming in with resumes and applications. So, you know, I don't know. So I didn't have an expectation that Todd or Heather would end up there. Um, and that's not a knock on them, it's just not knowing who's going to apply. Um, secondly, um, I'm still going to have a hard time fitting in extra days to schedule extra meetings. And so that's going to affect how quickly we can do it. Because I just don't have the ability to commit that extra time in the next month with everything going on. Um, and that's why I really supported the search committee from the very beginning is it was all about time. I don't have it. Not to go through, um, officially go through all of the previous sixteen applicants plus minimum of five new applicants. And then determine and schedule interviews and go through the interview process. At the same time, we're going through an interim administrator's interview process. Um, to me, it, I just, I don't think I'll be doing the town, uh, any favors by committing to something that I don't think I can give the full attention to that I should.
My concern goes back to, you know, as Dylan even said, we, he expected to see Heather's name on top of the pile. And after seeing and reviewing all sixteen candidates, which I did, I still expected to see her resume on top of that pile. So, um, I, I think it's hard to fully convey what we're looking for to the committee because they very clearly picked people in the end, um, different than, than I would have. And the people that I would have most liked to see and that weren't even included in their list. So I'm, I'm still very strongly in favor of going through this, which no matter what, I'm going to go look at all the resumes at this point, no matter what. And that, you know, I don't think that takes me, but, uh, you know, the sixteen I've looked at, so I need to look at five to 10 new ones. It'll take me an hour some weekend day before we have a meeting. And then I'll know who I want to interview. I, I don't see this as a daunting task. I don't see this as a drawn-out big thing. It's, it's set aside two hours at some point when they close on Thursday and, and, and until we meet on Monday to make my recommendations and I will have mine ready. And, and you guys, you know, can decide, I guess it's going to be Dylan, if you can decide which way you'd rather go with this. I, I'm going to lean towards no committee. I think Matt's pretty clearly leaning towards committee. Um, it's, there's three of us, we're just going to make a decision and, and move on.
I got one last thing I'd like to say is, um, I think we had a very good committee that really did do a good job.
Yep.
Um, and I think you got to be careful with how a board brings a committee together, asks them to do a job and then says, thank you, but I want to throw all your work out. You're not really encouraging town participation on volunteer boards, the more you do that. Um, I think you really need to think about that when you're talking about, I didn't like what they gave me, so I'm going to start all over. Because that's kind of how the message is being received.
Well, I want to, speaking of that, we were very clear to say that I think the committee did an excellent job with what we gave them. I said before and I'll say it again, we failed to make our expectations very clear. And that's on us. We just don't have the time to redo it and go through the extra two weeks to have them review again. The, the way they picked is the way they picked and we are still respecting their wishes. Two of their three picks, we still want very strongly to interview. That's part of why we re-advertised, to make sure we can look at one of those candidates that we weren't legally allowed to look at. So we've gone and, and kind of redid this process so we could look at the candidates they brought us. Now, in the process of doing that, we're going to look at the one more we wanted to and by virtue, we're going to look at the new ones that come in because we advertised. But we're trying to comply with their wishes and trying to look at the people they brought forward to us. And we understand what they did and how hard they worked on it. And I have respect for their opinion, that's why those two people will absolutely be in this finalist list for interviews. But I just think the time, I can go through this and, and, you know, we could look at these over the weekend after the deadline and we'll have a couple hours to go through these candidates quickly and, and pick a couple to interview. And then we can move right into our interviews and if we want a second round, great, but we don't have to, we could interview seven if we wanted to and probably do it in one round.
I don't have.
Not that we see seven.
Hours in one night for an interview process.
No, I said, not, well, not one night, one round.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, you don't need to interview everyone, then, then narrow it down. If the committee does it, they're going to narrow it down to three to five again. Then it's going to come back to us and have our two weeks till we meet on it. And then we're going to go interview them and we'll narrow it down to one, that's, that's two rounds. Whereas if we did it and even if it was seven people, it might be two nights, but it'll be one round and we probably, probably can make a decision. Um, if it was that close, we'd interview again on, on one evening. But I, I think it's going to step this up by two weeks, which is getting very important at this point. And it does not discard their work, their work is still included. But because we re-advertised, we're going to have to open the field up to anybody else that puts their hat in there and give them proper consideration. But they've already made their decision, they've already given us two, we're using those two.
Yeah, but one thing you're doing now also is you're transitioning from their experience um, of the interviews and knowledge of the interviews of the previous applicants. And you're losing that. You have no clue beyond the piece of paper what these other sixteen that weren't part of finalists or even the finalists, you weren't in the interview. So you don't have that information or that experience to add to whatever we do forward.
Which is why we didn't want them ranking the candidates in the first place, so we do this ourselves without their experience. That's, that was the idea, we bring candidates to us and we look at as selectmen without the outside influence. So I, I don't have an issue with that still.
All right.
Matt, any more comments? Either way, sound something off, are you ready to make a motion one way or the other?
If I were to make a motion, my motion is I make a motion that the new applicants go back to the search committee and they come back with three to five finalists.
Matt, you can make a different motion or second that one, it's up to you.
Well, I made it, so Dylan would have to.
I mean, Dylan, sorry, yes. Yes.
And I understand what you meant, I was just.
You repeat your motion, Matt, please?
I make a motion that we take any new applications that come in during the second advertisement process and send it back to the search committee, have them review it. Process and resend us a new three to five finalist lists. It could or could not include any of the previous finalists based on the new information with the new applicants.
Uh, I'm just, I'm not going to second the motion. I believe we should, uh, with the, with the time constraints that we're facing, I think that we should, uh, keep it, keep it in the board for now. Within the board, we should, I think we should, uh, review who, who, uh, has applied and who will apply over the next few days and, uh, start going through the resumes ourselves.
Want to put that in a form of a motion?
Sure, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, that we review applicants as they arrive and, um, s- schedule, uh, interviews up to three for a meeting on next Wednesday.
Mm-mm. That's the interim.
That's the interim.
Interim.
I'll make a motion that we receive our new candidates and resumes ourselves as a board. Um, as of the 25th, everything we have in, we will review them ourselves and at our next meeting, which should be the first meeting in July, we can discuss those and hopefully schedule interviews then.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, second that motion.
Have a motion in a second, any more conversation, questions, debate?
I'm just not sure how you think this is saving time. But that's okay, especially if we're going to go get an interim administrator anyway. This, this feeling of the sky is falling because we don't have a permanent. It's, I don't feel it's worth rushing the process, but that's okay. You want to get the right person, you don't want to just force the, and pressure it and make it happen.
Absolutely agree with that. Any more conversation or comments, response, uh, Dylan? All right, hearing no more, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
O'Sullivan, yes, those opposed?
Matt Urban, nay.
Motion carries two to one, we'll interview ourselves, so when the applicants come in, uh, we can receive them personally from Sandy any way we want. Up until the 25th, we'll receive the applicant's deadline that we receive by the end of business on the 25th and we shall start reviewing those um, for our meeting on Monday. Anything else we need this evening, I'm forgetting, gentlemen? Or Heather, Sandy?
Are we scheduling a meeting for? Okay, so you mean July 7th, that Monday?
Uh, our first meeting in July.
Okay.
We have, these close to 25th, that leaves us twelve days to have it done. Um, is it that late? The town meeting's on the 30th, which is Tuesday. So yeah, it'll be.
See, if we just approved and said.
It's only like, uh, this. It's not the 12th, it's, what is it? Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it should be the 6th, should be July 6th.
Well, the 4th of July is that weekend, so would that put, push our meeting to the 7th, Tuesday the 7th?
Okay.
Monday, the 6th.
Monday's July 6th.
Yeah, so we should be all right with the meeting Monday.
Holiday would be July 3rd.
Right.
So we shouldn't have any problem then, that gives us from the 25th, that gives us 11 days to review. Um, which should be plenty of time to go through them. Of course, during that time, we're going to have, um, the annual town meeting, which is going to probably occupy some of our time between now and then.
And a holiday weekend.
And a, and a holiday weekend. So I think that's, you know, I think the 11 days is plenty of time to review, given that we have things between, I don't see any reason to try to have a meeting before that. Um, but I think it's sufficient time to review whatever we have in for, you know, for the, uh, resumes.
So Greg?
Yes?
So on, I just want to get this straight, now on July 6th is going to be a regular Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yes.
What's going to be included in that? We have the public hearing and then we have regular agenda items.
Public hearing for. Public hearing for what?
That's the poll petition for, um, South Barrett Road in Clem Court.
Right, I don't know if we have any other business to develop that and get it on, on the agenda.
Okay.
For now, what we definitely want to put on is that, um. The selectmen will, um. And exa- may have to make an executive session to discuss the candidates.
Okay.
Can't do it. Not an executive session, once you do, bring it to the Board of Selectmen. It's full, full, open meeting. It can only be executive session under a search committee until you get the finalists, and then it's open session.
Correct.
The whole process.
Then we'll do it in open session, I don't, I don't mind it's open.
No, I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
I thought it was till the interviews, the interviews of the first open portion, but. I thought the discussions were still executive, but. Either, either we'll make sure we get it the right, we'll advertise possible, possible executive. Um, and any, any deliberation we have will be open, um, that's for sure, once we do interviews. Um, I had just thought up two interviews, it was still. You can clarify that though. But before we, uh. Move forward with it. Uh, Monday, otherwise, we shouldn't have anything else. Right now, pending that I know of, other than the poll petition, the. You know, the, um, deficit spending wasn't approved, so we're safe with that. I don't think the sewer commission met. So I don't know if they've done a twelfth for the water sewers, we better hope we get this, uh.
State approved it anyway.
Greg, I talked.
Yeah?
Okay, um, I did talk to Dean yesterday, and Dean said, uh, as long as, um, you guys voted. Uh, if your vote was to cover the operating and the water and sewer, that they would be all set to go, so maybe while you guys are here. If you just wanted to vote to cover those two pieces as well, um. That will clarify and make sure that Dean's covered with submitting everything, she said she talked to DLS, and DLS said that. You guys in fact could actually vote for the water and sewer so that we would cover them.
Do we need to resubmit documents, or is, it's okay with just the vote because the numbers won't change?
Uh, the numbers won't change, I would just, if you guys would mind taking a quick vote on that, I'll just update. Find the certification to make sure it says all three budgets.
Okay, does anybody want to form the motion for that?
I make a motion that the Board of Select and approve the one-twelfth budgets for the water enterprise and the sewer enterprise. One-twelfth budgets. In the event that we do not get a town meeting. Budget approved prior to the end of fiscal year FY twenty.
In addition to. They want all three.
We already did the other one.
Okay.
You can modify the motion if you want, I just felt like that, that covered what they needed.
That, that's fine. To include them in the twelfth budget, that's fine.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second Matt's motion.
Okay, have a motion and second, do we have any further discussion on it? Hearing done, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Regal Sullivan, yes, motion carries unanimous, so we've included the water sewer, um, into our one-twelfth. That should keep that safe. We have the warrant out, we have the articles changed we wanted, we have the interim post incoming, possible interim interviews for Wednesday. We have. The decision made on what we're doing with the applications. Timeline will be the first Monday meeting in July, along with our poll petition, that should be, I believe, all the business. Heather, have we missed anything we need today?
For those that might have come on late, Heather's been doing her best with a, a tough internet connection from her location.
I was just saying, um, the only thing not to necessarily be discussed. Helpful, because the warrant needs to get posted on Monday. Ellen needs to get to the constables and so forth, it would be very helpful if one of you could print out the signature page, or I can email you the signature page. Sign it, and then maybe drop it off in the lockbox over the weekend, so that on Monday, someone else could come in. If not both, all the other two and sign, so we get a head start on this, or if you guys can all agree to come in on Monday to sign it. I think, um, Sandy's out on Monday, but we can make sure that we leave it in the treasurer's office.
Don't we normally sign all copies real hand, or do we photocopy that?
You're only required to have one copy signed.
Okay.
Um, so it's up to you, I mean, if you want multiple copies, I can, we can print out multiple pages and have you guys sign, it's not a big deal.
If we need one signed, I think that's fine, you guys have any other preference?
I don't, but I know that Monday. I've got a very long day in Worcester, so I'm leaving town. By six thirty, seven o'clock, and I'm not going to be back to town until six o'clock, so for me to sign.
Okay. So, so if I email you, if I email you the signature page, Matt, over the weekend, can you sign in, drop it off in the lockbox before Monday? And then Dylan and Greg can stop by on Monday to sign?
I can, I only have an eight and by, eight and a half by eleven printer though, is that going to be an issue?
No, that's perfect.
Okay, I'm just used to warrants being like, whatever they were, eight and a half by fourteen or something.
Nope, I'm going to print on the normal size.
Okay, thank you. I can do that.
All right, I'll send it over.
So Matt, if you maybe just shoot. So Matt, when you put it in the, um. Well, we can't access in the Dropbox, can we?
No, but, but the treasurer's office will pull it out of there on Monday, and I'll let Sharon know it's going to be there. So they'll have it ready for you in the treasurer's office on Monday, because Sandy's out.
Okay, um, Dylan, you okay to get in Monday morning?
Yeah.
Oh, but, otherwise, you know, we could. Make arrangements to hand it off between the three and get it all signed over the weekend and put it in the box done.
That would be perfect.
Like Matt, if you printed it and signed it, you could drop it off at my house, or hand it to me, then I'll sign it and get it to Dylan. And then it's, then it's up there signed by everybody before Monday. You know, I hate waiting, I hate waiting till the eleventh hour.
Didn't send it to me. I'll print it out, get it signed, and then I'll get it to Greg as quick as possible, and then Greg can work with Dylan and vice versa to get it over to, uh. The treasurer's office or Ellen for Monday.
Sounds good.
That, that sounds good. And Sandy, I, I'll use you as a go-between to get contact to Dylan from me. So, so we're not having direct communications in between, just so you can figure out where. He wants to meet me or how he wants to get it.
Okay.
You know, if need be, Dylan, it's, if, if you know where I live, I'm right across from Rice Park, I can also just have it here. Um. You know, I'll be in and out all weekend, I'll be gone Saturday a lot of the day, but I'll be home. Probably from four o'clock Saturday on.
Uh, I think Monday would be the best day for me, and I can. I can go to the Henry Woods, I could.
So you prefer me to drop it off after I, after Mac goes to me, I'll sign it and put it in the Dropbox?
Yeah, that works best for me.
All right, then we'll do that, that'll get you two sentences before Monday, and Dylan will come in and sign it.
Perfect.
Excellent. Last chance, anything else, anybody? Looking for the appropriate motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Regal Sullivan, yes. Have a good weekend, everyone stay cool.
Thank you, and same to you.
Me too.